Call this meeting in order to stand for the public.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for questions. Thank you. Please have a seat. If you have a cell phone, please turn on the vibrator, silence or shut it off. Ro- Rocon?
Karlovic.
Here.
Kramer.
Here.
Rechner.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Easter.
All right, now we're ending the council meeting so that we can have a public hearing for CDVG.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Hi, I'm Linda Sterling. I'm the city's CDVG administrator from Sinecog. Tonight is the final public hearing for a competitive grant for funding from the federal and state governments to mitigate flooding on Reagan Street. I don't know how many of you were here in September when we had the first public hearing, but I'll run over some quick information, and if there are more questions, please feel free to ask. There'll be a sign-in sheet coming around. I would just ask that you would sign in. If we run out of paper, there's more underneath. And when I leave, I will be happy to take the agendas and recycle them, if you want me to. We will be, tonight the council will be considering a motion to a resolution to apply for up to a million dollars in CDVG competitive funding. The city every year gets about $250,000 to $260,000 in what's called entitlement funding that is set aside for them annually. In the state budget, 30% of CDVG funding is set aside for large, urgent projects that a city cannot take care of funding on their own. And we, those applications are what's called competitive, so we have to work a little harder to prove to the state that that money will be well-spent in Sunbury. Tonight is the final hearing to explain the project and to give people an opportunity to ask questions about the project. Excuse me. The problem that we're looking to correct with this funding is that when Sunbury receives rain in excess of two inches an hour, which really is not a lot, the existing 15-inch combined stormwater sewer line that runs along Reagan Street and carries stormwater and sewer from the Reagan Street drainage area to the pump station becomes inundated, and that stormwater backflows up through the storm drains and causes, depending on the amount of rainfall and the amount of inundation, mild to severe flooding. That flooding creates delays in emergency response, dangerous driving conditions, and sanitary hazards for the city. The solution that we're seeking to be able to fund with this grant application would be replacing that 15-inch line with a new 48-inch line that will become a new storm line from Fourth Street to the Front Street Pump Station. The capacity of the pump station is more than enough to handle that flow. The city just needs to be able to move the storm water up Reagan and to the pump station. So, once that project is complete, then the existing line will be continued to be used for sewer purposes. Then the entire street would be repaved to full depth. There would need to be new curving sidewalks. The city will need to completely rip up Reagan Street to make, to do this work, and then it will be rebuilt. The good news, however, is that the city would not be on the hook for paving because PennDOT has agreed to wait, that, that street was on the paving list. They've agreed to wait until after the project, and then they will repave, which will save, Jim? A lot, several thousand dollars.
Roughly $285,000.
Okay, thank you. Estimated cost for demolition of this line and the work that I just described would be under two, just under $2 million. Currently, we've, we've asked the state to consider the entitlement application for $240,000, the competitive for up to a million. That will be funded based on how many other applications come in and how valuable the state sees this project for the community. There's also an application in for Keystone Communities money in the amount of $400,000. The state, the city has received word that it's received $200,000 in flood mitigation money, and the municipal authority will be putting in at least $250,000 to get those work done. Of the competitive grant funds of a million dollars, $930,500 will go to actual project costs. $69,500 will be the contract amount that Sinecog will enter into a contract with the city in the event that the competitive is granted for administration of that funding. And I'd be happy to talk a little more about what that, those costs entail if, if folks have questions about what that, what that means. One of the things that I'm here tonight to tell you is that if you, if people here believe that this is an important project, we really do need to hear from you. With a competitive application, that's one thing that the state really puts a lot of emphasis on. I put some information on the front table about how to write a letter to Mayor Karlovic. It doesn't have to be, you have to worry about what it sounds like. It can be an email. It can be handwritten. Basically, "I support this project for these reasons" is all that we need to hear from you. So if anyone would be inclined to do that, it would be much appreciated and very helpful.
What would be the due date on that?
I'm hoping to put the application in by the end of the month, but that's a little aggressive. It's due the end of December, so November 30 would be a good target to get that in, if, if folks can please do that. Tonight I'll be asking the city to act on a resolution that basically gives Mayor Karlovic the ability to sign on behalf of the city and fill out the grant papers so that I can put the, I will put the application together. In the event that the city is turned down, which we hope that doesn't happen, there will be no charge. That's how Sinecog works its competitive applications. We only take administrative money if the application is approved. And so there'll be, the, the cost will go towards the actual writing of the application itself as long, as well as monitoring the project, doing invoicing, making sure CDVG regulations are being followed, is the, is kind of the short story. So, now, anybody have any questions at all? Do you want to hear any additional information about what I've just gone over? Have any questions? Yes?
Just a few quick questions. So it's a 48-inch line from Reagan Street to Front Street?
Along, it's a, a 40, I think that's 48 inches? I have to check my notes. Okay. Yeah, 48 inch line from Fourth Street to the pump station at, at Front and Reagan. And on, on Fourth Street, there is a, Jim, I forget the techni-, there, that's where they would, that's where they would hook into...
Well, the manhole, right?
Yeah, manhole. That's the technical term I was looking for.
Sure. Because maybe some people may not be aware, but the city is on a slope. That end of the city is on the higher plane, if you will, and down by the recycle area, that is the lower. And it has not helped over the years that some areas have been paved, so that helps to also fill that area up. So that 48-inch line will help to alleviate some takedowns. Not all, but some.
The, I know that, the, I would certainly, knowing the city engineer, trust him to be able to adequately determine the diameter of that pipe to resolve the issue.
Oh, yes. I know.
He's very good.
And another question I have, does UPMC have any input in this? Because I know since July that they have been feverishly getting their certifications for trauma.
That's a really good point. They don't have any input as far as approving or denying the application. That would be an entire city decision, but I am reaching out to them, and I'm not sure who exactly to reach out to for a letter of support for the project.
Because I'm pretty sure that they will, you know, they'll want that completed.
Good. Yes, sir.
How much oversight is the city going to have as far as the contractors scheduling his work, locking streets off, and et cetera? Because the work on Fourth Street was miserable. For getting to side streets and everything was a real pain in the neck. So there needs to be some scheduling done so people know in advance what's going to happen to avoid those areas. And I'm assuming they're going to have one night traffic because that is a major thoroughfare, get to the hospital.
Mr. Bell, first of all, Fourth Street is a PennDOT project in Haskett. We really didn't have much say in that. Back to Reagan Street, there will be times, Reagan Street's going to be shut down because this line will be down roughly 18 feet to pick up the pump station on Front Street. So when you have something that major depth-wise, the all kind of shoring, the cribbing, they have this big metal box that we all seen set along the project area. So Reagan Street will be shut down. It won't be for weeks. It could be for months. It'll be done in phases. So it's a major undertaking, and something has to be done because what has happened, the infrastructure was placed prior to the pump station on Front Street here when they built the flood wall. And the pumps, like Linda said, pumps are massive. They can handle the flow. We just can't get the water to the pumps. So by putting that line from front to fourth, and then also Julie, the major line running up Susquehanna will be one of the other phases. Then the labels will come off and pick up areas like yourself over on Edison. And then the next street over would, which would be Augusta Avenue up through there. And then up around Packer Street, there'll be another crossover pipe. Running parallel with the flood wall on Front Street, there's a 48 running north and south. We're going to utilize that on the north side in around Packer Street and put another 48-inch lateral coming across Front Street, which will be boring under Front and tying that section in also because the flow is 137 acres roughly in that portion that we're referring to.
That means ending your traffic is going to be on Ray Street and Packer Street.
Yeah, so when, when this happens, Mr. Bell, we'll have to take down, sit with PennDOT, okay? And of course, have public meetings, so the ambulances, the fire trucks, everybody understands where they have to go, how long the time period, working with the local daily item and the radio station so everybody is kept informed when we're shut down and when we're only doing sections. A lot of that hasn't been discussed yet.
It will be an inconvenience, you know, but it will be much better when it's done.
Yes, it's going to be a rough year for construction, but when it's finished, of course, it will solve a lot of issues.
Just another question, Jim.
Yes.
So, in the hierarchy of rules, the city is responsible for this even though the municipal authority takes care of the water and whatnot. So, in areas such as North Second Street, is there also going to be some sort of resolve to eliminate all the silt and dirt that are entering those drains? Because that's kind of a hazard, if you will.
Well, the engineer we were in a discussion within the last two, three months, the old gut, which is utilized, and actually, the gut's in better shape than what you would think. They have cameraed the whole thing. They spent this past summer, I'm not sure the tonnage they took out, they brought a company in that chopped back or vacuumed a lot of it out. And there was provisions made back in the day when they built the place. There's actually worries where it catches the silt. And now they're looking to building two in that system to do exactly what you're saying, is a catch-all and putting new access panels on the gut itself to, just to clean that, keep that sediment out of the plant and out of the river.
Okay.
That stuff is on, on the table.
Because those rocks do absolutely nothing to divert water off of any problem.
Oh, you're, okay. I know where you're going to now, but up there along the bank, okay. I understand what you're saying.
Correct.
But say here again...
There's a lot of silt and dirt and stone that goes into that basin.
That's true. Now, one of the things we can do there is, when we're in that area, and it won't be next year, it'll be like 2022, I'm guessing, put another catch basin line in that parking lot and make provisions in the box. The manhole, not the man, it's going to be the, the, the catch basin itself, a sump in there to catch that sediment and then clean it from there, instead of allowing it to get into the lines. Did they make manholes for that?
Right, because they, they, they've been there plenty to sweep it out or suck it out or whatever it is that they do.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Will there be other road constructions scheduled that coincide with the dates of proposing this Reagan Street?
Yes. It's the easy answer. North Fourth Street's going to be paved as well. You know, it'll just depend on what timing we get all this funding allocated. But North Fourth Street's also, all the work that's going out, PennDOT's scheduled to come back in next year and repave everything all the way down through there. UGI tells us that they're, this is their, they're going to have to come back in and repave everything, but this was their last, they're hoping to do this project and then not have to do anything like this for a long time. But yeah, I mean, everything that's done this year is going to have to be paved and finalized next year when, to get it all right, so it's gonna, not going to take as long because paving isn't going to be as long a process, but you know, sugarcoat it and say it's not going to be other construction because there will be, won't be as significant, I don't think, as what we've gone through this summer, but...
But one more project will be addressed next spring, actually midsummer because of the fact of light standards, the Fourth Street and Arch Street intersection, which will be totally rebuilt. Now, we're in a pushdown to get that let out and bid because of light standards for the traffic signals takes six months once you order them to receive them. So, it's a long story. There was two companies on the East Coast that manufactured. One company doesn't meet Pennsylvania's standards anymore. They're trying to recertify, so we're down to one company and it takes six months.
And just a little bit on timing. The funding for this project will not be available, you know, DCE is saying March. But really till you can actually spend it, let a contract for putting a project out to bid is going to be the end of the summer, so it's entirely possible that some excavation will start after paving. It'll be hard, it's hard to know, you know, so much depends on when the funding is available. Any other questions? Okay, Mayor, if you would like to declare the public hearing open and reopen your meeting, we'll ask that you give council an opportunity to vote on the resolution to authorize the application.
So the public hearing is now over, and we are restarting the council meeting. So I'll make a motion to accept this resul- resolution that Linda Sterling was talking about.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Easter.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
And I didn't even look at the agenda. Is there anything else on there for me that you'd like me to say? Nope.
No.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Sure. I'll get out of your way. Remember the notes about the, the letters, please, if anybody wants to write, and I will be in contact with the police and the hospital and, you know, major organizations to get some support.
An executive session was held today prior to the meeting for personnel litigation concerns. And just a quick note to thank all the veterans for today's Veterans Day. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes and reports of September 24, 2018, September 26, 2018, October 8, 2018, October 22, 2018. The reports are Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, and Code Office.
Easter.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
The vacant property registration update is, has been taken off for tonight's agenda. Is there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? Please stand.
Alan Bell, city native. I do have a comment on the vacant property. I was thinking, is this registration going to include the square footage of the properties that are being registered? Because I think that, if you have any fees, should be based on square footage. And that should probably be, if it's a multi-story building, according to square footage on each floor. So I make that suggestion.
All right, thank you. Any other audience comment on agenda items over? Did you have?
Regina Mussel, elected Democratic Committee Woman, Ward Two. Over the past year, and I've missed a couple of months coming to the meetings, we have been discussing the problems of the budget. And I'm just curious as to why the controller hasn't been here and has not been held accountable for any problems that the mayor and this council has had because the controller is an elected position, and that person is supposed to be responsible for financial statements, the general ledger, payroll, payables, receivables, and any other various analysis. And it just seems like nobody seems to be mentioning the controller. And Officer Herb Hare certainly isn't the controller, but he sits in front of her name, so you have that name tag here all the time. She's really here, and I think that she should be accountable and should be answering questions to the public. And I, I'm, I'm making reference to that because we have a new budget ordinance that's coming up, and I see a new tax ordinance is coming up. So would the account, would, would the controller have some oversight on that as the gatekeeper?
Yes, she does, and we have discussed it with her.
Yeah, but she doesn't come and discuss anything with us.
I know.
Thank you.
Any other audience comment on the agenda items only at this time? We have a couple representatives here for Elijah's Bowl, if you would come up.
What would you like this to do?
Just first introduce each of you so that the city clerk can take your names.
Okay. I'm Connie Lanning. I'm one of the coordinators for the Elijah's Bowl Community Soup Kitchen.
I'm Stephen Lanning. I'm coordinator also.
I'm Becky Enders. I take care of the floor ministry and picking up food items.
I'm Reverend Lake Sacraus. I'm the pastor of the First Presbyterian Church where Elijah's Bowl does its ministry.
Okay, thank you. Can I just discuss with the public and us, just inform us what exactly the Elijah's Bowl does, a little bit of the history and everything?
Okay. Everybody does, so it could be quick. Elijah's Bowl Community Soup Kitchen began on January 26, 1991 for the purpose of glorifying God and to love our neighbors. It grew out of a leader's vision upon hearing there was hunger in Sunbury. We are a mission of the First Presbyterian Church, Sunbury, and are overseen by the Board of Session of this particular church, which is located directly across Cameron Park from this council meeting. We are entirely volunteer organization from the board to the coordinators to individuals who help lead weekly to the groups of 12 who serve yearly. Our meal is served every Saturday from 10:30 a.m. until 12:00 noon, and as of November 10th, we have served 116,172 meals. In addition to the meal, day-old bread and pastries donated by local grocery stores and restaurants, and a bag of canned goods donated by churches and civic groups are offered to each individual. All are welcome at Elijah's Bowl to enjoy fellowship and a nutritious meal. No questions are asked, and there are no forms to fill out. Our guests are families, single mothers with children, the elderly, some, and some come from the high rises in the city, single man, and yes, we have the homeless. We welcome all of them into our Elijah's Bowl family. Our volunteers come from churches, civic groups, youth groups, and individuals. We ask each group to have a coordinator that recruits 12 individuals to serve on their Saturday, setting up the dining room, bagging groceries, cooking, serving the meal, and cleaning up. Our monetary donations and canned goods come from those same churches, civic groups, foundations, individuals, and an occasional grant. Our pantry has never been emptied in 28 years due to those wonderful folks. Many in the city cry out for help, asking for food, for a friend, for someone to care, and with First Presbyterian Church opening their doors, and also with the generous help of this community and this surrounding communities, God answers their cries for help. And it has been an absolute privilege for all of us to serve alongside such an incredible caregiving community.
So I have a pre-cred proclamation for Elijah's Bowl and their organization. Whereas Elijah's Bowl started on January 26, 1991 by the First Presbyterian Church of Sunbury, and whereas Elijah's Bowl is supported by many other churches, businesses, barrel TCs, scouting groups, volunteers, Sunday School classes, and youth groups. And whereas Elijah's Bowl serves over 100 free meals every Saturday and has served over 50,000 free meals since it began. And whereas Elijah's Bowl offers support, friendship, encouragement, free meals, and free grocery and personal items to those in need, which are donated by local businesses, churches, and individuals. And whereas Elijah's Bowl helps feed any person regardless of marital status, age, race, religion, disability, or financial situation who is hungry and in need of a meal. And now therefore, it is resolved that I, Kurt Karlovic, being mayor of the city of Sunbury, county of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the city of Sunbury council members and citizens, do hereby recognize and endorse Elijah's Bowl and the importance of its service to our community, and make a motion to accept this proclamation.
Second.
Reese.
Yes.
Easter.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Thank you all so much for what you do.
A pleasure.
Thank you.
And we invite city council to stop by any Saturday and join us.
I have a meeting, so I'll write it down.
You guys don't have to stay.
Thank you.
Chestnut Street update?
Yes, they are working every day. I hope they can do the game this week. They're on scratch. I guess it's supposed to rain Wednesday. As soon as they get, finish prepping done, they're going to start paving. I hate to say they don't give any timeframe because of the weather.
Councilor, as we talked about, are there restrictive parking on Chestnut Street?
Yes. Terry, can we make that announcement for the deal item and...
Here it sits.
That doesn't mean it'll get there, but... At the radio station, still the construction's done in Chestnut, going daytime hours, evening hours they depart here. Thank you.
All right, new business, Councilwoman Kramer, reading the budget.
Council has worked diligently to get the budget under control. We are going to be hiring police officers next year, but on a gradual basis, which will help defray some of the costs throughout the year. It's all been budgeted for five new officers, I believe.
Yes.
And we managed to balance the budget with no tax increase. Woo!
My social credit line item is paid back. So the first line item, as you say, was to pay back debt loans as fast as we possibly can. And then the line item was $95,000. I think we got that right now. So good job, council.
Okay.
Now we have the ordinance for the tax.
We need to take a look on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you need to look on that.
I will.
I'll second it.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
All right, now the tax levy?
Since we're not raising the taxes to balance the budget, the taxes will remain the same. The general tax revenue, purpose at 27 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 270 on each hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The tax recreation purpose is 2.0 mils on each dollar. The library tax is 0.25 mils of each dollar. And the tax for debt reduction rate is 2 mils on each dollar. I'd like to make a motion that we maintain this.
Second.
Kramer?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
All right, we'll just get a little bit here. Councilwoman Kramer, approve the pay invoices?
Oh, yeah. We have invoices for the general fund of $31,330.14, and for local fuel, $14,697.65. I make a motion that we pay them.
Second.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Tax exoneration?
Yes, we have. People who have applied for tax exoneration, and the total tax exoneration is $1,400.43. I'd like to make that a motion that we exonerate them.
Second.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reese, Winter Service Services?
Yes, so our contract with PennDOT is, our agreement with them is coming up, aspiring to maintain winter services for Kewis Avenue. And we got all the information with them to renew that for another five-year agreement. So making a motion that we renew that agreement with them, where we maintain that and then they pay us to maintain that section of street.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right, with the holidays coming up, I make a motion to have free parking on Market Street and all metered streets from November 23, 2018, to January 1, 2019. Do you have a second?
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
November 30th, the street sweeping season ends, and the installation of Christmas decorations will begin Tuesday, November 13. The Santa Parade is Friday, November 23 at 6:30 p.m. Is there any audience comment at this time? Please approach the podium.
Alan Bell, city native, and I'm a little bit concerned about Bimbo and their truck tractors coming down North Second Street, and some plants are on Edison Avenue. Their truck tractors parked over there in the old Thor Company property, there is a gate there, all they have to do is come directly across the street into their property. They are not using that gate. There's a piece of jersey, a concrete barrier there. I'm wondering why they can't just come straight across the street instead of having to go around the block? And I think council should take a look at that and try and get that gate open that they can get across the street onto their property instead of going through residential areas. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mike? Or Jim?
I just would like to ask and, and thank the council for, one, first, for resolving the budget issue that is a big deal. Secondly, next month, may I ask Councilwoman Kramer if you could just give us a year-to-date total on the tax exonerations when you...
How about if you start fresh in January? I haven't had a total all year. That would mean I'd have to go back and redo every one of them. I'll see what I can do. But we'll start for sure in January if I do that.
So in December, you're not able to read the bottom of the general ledger telling me what the year-to-date total is on the tax exoneration? That's what you're telling me?
He's not on the general ledger.
I don't know what kind of accounting you do.
It's exonerating, man, that's all.
Thank you for your comment.
So I don't get an answer on that?
We can work on it for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I see Solcider isn't here, but is there any update on the Cameron debacle since he was front and center in the Dave Bowman investigation? Will we, when will we know anything? Or should I ask him at the next meeting?
The city hasn't even received an update on that.
Okay, so he can talk to Dave Holmer, but he can't talk to us. Okay.
Any other comments tonight? All right, the, the next council meeting is November 26, 2018, at 6:15 p.m. in the chambers. Thank you all for coming out. This meeting is now adjourned.